From Chipewa Home and School, Dave Gray. And I understand you will also be joined by Linda Hunt and Linda Paul.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Dave Gray and I am presenting on behalf of the Chipewa Home and School Association. There are a number of us in the audience tonight anxious to make you hear our message. I think there's a lot in the back with signs and number ups upstairs and it's nice to see community representation to come and present to you on behalf of Chipewa and the community. This is the third time I've had the privilege of speaking to this group. Unfortunately, the subject matter has been the same each time. The good news is that we've been making progress and it is coming to conclusion. Every Saturday morning, I look forward to reading the London Free Press, two favorite sections, the comics and the home section. I hope I don't have to spend much time on the comics and hopefully the ideas of our association don't fit into this category or you don't hear many tonight that fit into that. However, on the home sections, recent articles on renovations. They gave some guidelines to a successful project. The most important recommendation on a major renovation was to move out until the job is complete. This reduces stress, anxiety, and conflict among the family members. Unfortunately, we cannot move out of our school. The family members of Chipewa are prepared and committed to go through the modifications at our school in a successful completion. We understand all the pressure this modification will take. We see the benefits that will result from this necessary project. Chipewa has been identified for modifications, particularly for accommodation, and a great deal of work has been done by the board in preparation for this project. I understand and the community clearly recognizes that the board is under extreme pressure to reduce our spending due to budget cuts. We strongly urge that the Chipewa project not be a casualty of these reductions. The funding for Chipewa has been done through the London Board and was not tied to the provincial money. This fact will make it very tempting to use the Chipewa money to support projects that were based on this other funding that is no longer available from the province. We request that you do not subside to this temptation. I've spent a considerable amount of time explaining why Chipewa modifications are required in previous presentations and do not intend to review this again tonight. The school needs significant improvements and this has all been addressed by the engineering department very well and is supported by the community on plans that have been reviewed at our school. The merits of the Chipewa modifications have not changed over the last two years. They have been extensively reviewed and the plans have been developed. The community and the home and school are fully behind the proposals on how it will support the board priorities. I have attached my speech from last year that you can get later that outlines how it supports the priorities and all the justification to the project. Why is it so important to our community? We look at it as an investment in our future. Our society cannot afford to be short-term focused anymore. My biggest concern, it will be too late when we all realize this and the rest of the world will have passed us by. We will not have the infrastructure, the programs, or the resources to reverse the damage that will be done. The global economy and competition is here. What separates Canadians is our brains and innovation. This is started with our education system. We all need to remember this and make sure we provide for the future for each and every one of us. At Chipewa, we need an improvement in our facility to be part of that foundation. Learning can be influenced by your surroundings and the Chipewa facility needs these improvements. It is understood that the trustees have a number of difficult decisions to make. You will hear a number of people demanding that we cut spending. The Chipewa Home and School understands this and that spending reductions are required. It is time as a community that we begin to suggest ideas to help control spending and not just raise our voices in protest. We all need to be part of the solution and as far as the Chipewa Home and School Association is concerned, investment in the Chipewa project is part of the long-term solution. Education has become a very tough business. We have to look at capital spending, expenses, and what the future and long-term viability is. In the business world, the options would be first we'll sell the company. Obviously, I don't think it's very easy to sell our education system. Or we could relocate. I think that causes a bit of an issue of relocating. Or we could liquidate it and that's where I see a lot of people suggesting that we go. Let's just not invest in our future and liquidate our resources for the short term. Or more importantly, rejuvenate. And I think that's what we all have to do. We have to rejuvenate our system and invest appropriately as we need to. For those that argue that we can't afford to, can't afford capital expand, I respond that without this investment, we have no leaders for the future or foundation or for our well-earned retirement. We need these people to be supporting us when we all want to retire at the age of 65. We need to create a facility at Chipewa which is able to develop the leaders of the future and meet the strategic board priorities. The community has been involved and looks forward to helping our education system meet the rapidly changing needs of the community, business, and schools. You have all very difficult decisions to make. Please take the input you hear tonight and use it wisely to help the Chipewa Home and School and Board invest in our future. We can learn from the business as well. Let's copy Nike and just do it.
Good evening. I agree with everything that Dave has said and he put it very eloquently. My intention tonight is to go on with the needs and why the renovations should go through. My name is Linda Hunt. I have two children at the school. I'm also heavily involved in Kids Count and the Home and School at Chipewa. Recently, we did a survey with the Chipewa St. Anne's Kids Count and it showed that the children in our neighborhoods spend their recreational time watching television as number one, number two, visiting families, three, visiting with friends, four, playing outside, and five, shopping. Noticeably absent are activities that many children take for granted, hockey, figure skating, computer games, music lessons, drama, swimming lessons. These types of activities are all integral parts of a child's chance to be a successful learner. The addition of a gym, a computer lab, science and technology lab, and music room are necessary resources to help these children become healthy and successful learners, not at-risk learners. For a majority of students in the Chipewa neighborhood, Chipewa Public School is the only resource for learning that they have access to. They need the best that Chipewa and the Board of Education can give them because sometimes that's all they get. They need the resources that the renovation can provide. Chipewa is not handicapped accessible. The renovations will allow all of our students equal access to the building during school and after school. Chipewa's physical building and resources are not equal to some of the schools or a majority of the schools in the city. The renovations will address this issue. The Board of Education and Kids Count have identified Chipewa and 22 other schools in the city as a compensatory school. Many of the students at Chipewa have been identified as at-risk learners. The Board can continue to show their support and commitment to Kids Count by providing the resources through the renovations to assist the at-risk learners at Chipewa. The students at Chipewa need the renovations to be completed at our school, help turn our at-risk learners into healthy, successful learners. Please support the renovations at Chipewa. They need them.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Linda Paul. My husband Roger and I have lived in the Chipewa Public School area for the last 16 years. We have two daughters, aged 14 and 11, both who attended Chipewa before joining the French immersion program. Our eldest is now attending Banting Secondary School and our youngest has transferred back to Chipewa last year for grade five. I have been involved with the Chipewa Public School for many years, starting in 1983 as a committee member of the Evelyn Harrison Huron Heights and Chipewa School Study Committee. At that time, our study concluded with the closing of Huron Heights Public School. I learned many of the complexities involved in determining student needs, building needs, population trends, et cetera. I believe that this valuable experience has helped me to assess not only the need for the addition onto Chipewa Public School, but also to understand the board's budgeting and planning concerns. I am sure that you don't need me to tell you what a wonderful, warm atmosphere there is at Chipewa. It's a model of cooperation, respect, and caring. I don't need to tell you either about the need for the gym, the extra classrooms, wheelchair accessibility, and other facilities at Chipewa as those have already been identified by the board. Otherwise, planning wouldn't have proceeded in securing surveys, architectural blueprints, tenders, et cetera. I do, however, want to inform you about the continued population growth in our area. Although the new home building has slowed to a trickle, the resale of mature homes is booming. These homes are 25 to 30 years old and are owned mostly by the original buyers from whom who bought them when they were brand-new. There have been five homes sold within two blocks of our house recently by owners who have either retired elsewhere or who have died. Each of these homes is now occupied by a young family with either preschoolers or school-aged children. This trend will continue and it will certainly increase the population of Chipewa School. If the addition is not built now, the increased student load will put a heavier strain on this school, which has already been identified as needing additional facilities. I'm a taxpayer too. I don't want to have my tax dollars spent without careful thought. But I also want to delay, and I don't want to delay an inevitable expense that will cost us more in the future. You already know that the cost of everything is literally, everything is constantly rising. If the addition is not built now, the need will still be there, even greater, but the cost is going to be even higher and the budget probably even tighter. You have difficult decisions ahead of you with many budget concerns, but I hope you will consider seriously this addition to Chipewa as being the necessity that it really is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, thank you very much for your presentation. Sorry, there were a couple of, just Alex, I'll recognize you in a moment. The presentation that you made, we only have copies of part of it. Can you leave those with us and we'll see that you get a copy back of them? Great, thanks very much. Sorry, trustee Sutherland, if you could just...
Question.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you. Representing Brock Public School, Home and School, Lynn Primack and two students, Natalie McCullough and Lindsay Kendall. I'll remind the trustees you have a revised copy of the report on your desk.
Members of the board, I wish to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the teachers, parents, and students of Sir Isaac Brock Public School. We are here tonight to express our views on the enhancement to the present building and a port-a-pack to provide the extension of grades seven and eight to our school. As you are aware from previous presentations, our community is in need of the completion of this project. In 1986, there was consideration given to closing Sir Isaac Brock School. In 1989, the addition and the extensions of grades, excuse me, the grades was approved by the Board of Education. This is the third presentation that I've made to the board on this subject and enrollment figures have risen each time. In 1994, we had 370 students. In 1995, we had 408 and as of September, we had 417 students. This is a growth of approximately 13% in three years. This area continues to grow and the need for grade seven and eight is obvious. With the fire over Christmas, our need for space became even more evident. The ASL teacher uses the vacant nurses' office. Some classes are using closets for space. All teachers have been told to take home all their own resource materials and now must bring in teaching units daily. And there's also no space available for our design and technology. A photocopier room has been considered for the board-directed computer lab for 30 computers. VCRs, TVs, film and overhead projectors are now in hallways, which is a fire hazard against regulations and endangerment to our children. Our library has been subdivided to the maximum. There is nowhere now to stretch any more space from. We realize that funds will be limited due to the provincial cutbacks, but this project is far cheaper than building new facilities, which could be the case if upgrades to the present facility are not done or if the growth rate continues. I'm going to ask two students to give the remainder of this presentation. Natalie McCullough and Lindsay Kendall are presently enrolled in grade six at Sir Isaac Brock. When they graduate in June, they will be forced to change schools to complete their elementary education. I think that all our reasons for the addition can be explained by listening to these two students who speak from the heart. Ladies and gentlemen, please ensure that in these days of fiscal restraint, that our project remains part of your fiscal mandate and that we can truly have students who can graduate and feel proud to say that they have attended Sir Isaac Brock Public School until grade eight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Kendall and I'm a grade six student at Sir Isaac Brock Public School. Natalie and I are here to talk to you about having an extension added onto our school. In 1986, the school was underpopulated and was about to close down. Three years later, the Board of Education decided not to close us down because more children started coming to our school. They began thinking about having a grade seven and eight added on but decided not to. In 1995, we were supposed to have the extension but are now put off until 1998. Now, the school is overpopulated with a total of 14 classrooms, two portables, 18 classes of 432 students. At lunchtime, students from grades four to six must eat on the gym floor, which is not swept before the lunch hour but swept afterwards. W Sherwood Fox was the twin of Sir Isaac Brock until they got the extension. They now have two gyms, an automatic door for the gyms, a lunchroom, grade seven and eight, and a mini-theater in the library. I think it would be good for the school to get the extension for the younger students. Grade threes would be able to go to Sir Isaac Brock up until high school instead of having to switch schools for junior high. I think that Sir Isaac Brock is in a good neighborhood and in a good location and is a really good school. The teachers are nice as well as the students and I believe the school needs and deserves the extension. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natalie McCullough and I go to Sir Isaac Brock Public School. As you know, I'm here to talk about my school and it hopefully getting an extension. I'm here to tell about why my school needs an extension and also how I feel about all this. Why do we need an extension, you ask? There are many reasons why. For one, Sir Isaac Brock was made for about 300 people and yet there are over 400 students attending school here. This means that my school is overpopulated. Another reason may be that this is, that this school is in the neighborhood of many children and parents. That means that my school is nice and close and safe for the little kids who walk to school. If they had to go to a different school in grade seven, they would be farther from home and would maybe result in them being late for school or having to move. There is another reason why my school needs a grade seven and eight. We need new heating systems and air conditioning because right now, they don't work very well. So we are freezing in the winter and boiling hot in the summer. Some other reasons are as follows. Some parents believe that too much responsibility is put on the grade sixes at my school. For example, hall monitors, safety patrol, and conflict clusters. Some parents also think that we are too young to be doing these things in grade six. Sherwood Fox got an addition a few years ago. Before this, they had a school that looked exactly like Sir Isaac Brock and they were in the exact same problem, too many students, too little school. But why did they get an extension and not us? With the addition, they got a bigger gym, design and technology facilities, more storage, and a bigger library. Furthermore, Fox has a lunchroom and we at Brock have to eat off the gym floor, which is getting very crowded too. The last reason that my school needs an extension is because sometimes switching schools is hard for some kids because some kids don't make friends as fast as others do. To me, it doesn't make any sense to move to a different school for two years and just as you are getting to know the kids at your new school, you have to switch again to high school. I feel this way because I and other students already have many friends and people we know and trust at Brock. In conclusion, I would like to say that I hope this speech has made your decision a little easier. Hopefully, your decision will be yes and that my school will get an extension, but all I and the rest of my school can do is wait.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate having a student's perspective as well. Are there any trustee questions? Trustee Brock?
Perhaps to Lynn. In the plan, it's scheduled for 1998.
We realize that.
So in your presentation, is that it be maintained?
We'd like it to be maintained, obviously. I mean, it would be nice if we could get it in 1997, but we know with the provincial cutbacks, it probably won't. But as long as it stays into the, to 1998, that would make us very happy.
And the plan that's there for 1998, in fact, takes it to a grade eight...
That's right.
And addresses the other concerns that you've identified.
That's right.
Thank you.
No further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. When we move on to speaker number four from HALT, Wayne Dunn. Trustee Jeff? I'm sorry, did you have a question?
If there's questions that come up of administration, are we saving those for the end of the meeting or next week? For example, if there's point of clarification?
Questions of clarification, we should ask, we should ask this evening at the time of the report, at the time of the presentation. If there's something you want to go back to, maybe we can deal with that after Mr. Dunn has made his presentation. But just to clarify, I would, I would request those issues. But debate and discussion and decision is next week, but if there are issues of clarification, it should be this evening.
Administration, but not the speaker. We can ask those.
Sorry, Mr. Dunn. Thank you very much.
How in the world do I follow that act? That's, this must be a trick question, putting me number four after, after them. Anyways. Good evening. My name's Wayne Dunn. I'm a parent, a business owner, and here again representing HALT. For anyone who needs to be reminded about HALT, hold all London taxes, we are a large nonpartisan group of concerned Londoners who care deeply how our tax dollars are spent. This is not a movement by HALT against the administration, trustees, teachers, or the education system, but an effort to attempt to show sound reasoning to everyone, particularly the trustees that change must occur. It will be very interesting this year on your voting pattern concerning this accommodation report and the budget to follow. To simply keep approving all these projects in this economic climate is wrong. I look back at the last few years that I've spoken on this topic and the budget and see that HALT is bang-on on the concerns that have been continuously raised. More will be spoken about this at budget time on these issues. However, I feel there have been several missed opportunities to act upon the accommodation issues along the way. This may be your last real chance to adopt change and set a proper direction for the board's capital expenditure program. I sincerely hope you will do more than listen. The same issue concerns me as last year and the previous year when the $200 million question was raised. It is the little word called debt and most of this $200 million has already been approved. How do you ever expect to balance your books when the interest and principal payments are hard enough to meet now at $9 million per year? With that number to rise to $14 million in 1997, $24 million in 1998, and a whopping $29 million by the year 2000. The outstanding debenture load will have gone from $50 million in '93 to a peak of $152 million in 1999. You are putting us way close to the maximum line concerning the debt and financial obligation limits set out by the province. We don't want to go that deep in debt. There are also several, several projects that are financed from the current operating budget that is separate from issuing, from issuing your debentures. Also, as a set out in all the accommodation documents, costs and projections are set out in $1995 without taking into account inflation, price escalations, or interest rates. The interest rate used is 7.96% for the debenture issues. I've spoken on this before. A change of only 1% would increase our interest charges by over $12 million over the next 10 years. The mill rate impact from the new and renovated schools alone, the public will not tolerate. And we haven't even touched the social contract issue or operating budget yet. On top of all these expenditures for the building and renovating are the new furniture and equipment that also have to be purchased. That is a lot of extra money that isn't included. Another area of concern is that of the projected budget figures to build or renovate these schools. The 1994 report has Chipewa costing $3.2 million, the 1995, $5 million. Likewise, White Oaks Bradley, 7.8 to 9.6. Ross, 7.3 to 8.1. Saunders, 4.9 to 5.8. Clark Road, 9.3 to a potential 16.5. And the list goes on. I'm sure there are various reasons, however, look at the trend that has developed. Let's not forget the amount Beale is going to cost us either. The financial picture I presented is serious and real. I clearly understand that much of this work is going to be required and it's too bad we can't do it all at once. However, it is now time to reset the list of priority schools that have to be done. I would have a serious problem with the extra expenditure Clark Road and would suggest to reduce it back to the previous levels. Do we really need to spend $1.2 million for a new cafeteria there? The extras in that project alone could go a long way for upgrading several other schools or provide enough for the new Masonville. Please ask yourself, why has Bradley increased so much? Why is the air conditioning to Chipewa still included when it's not going to year-round schooling? This is an area that should be cut out immediately to save approximately $200,000. I'm willing to bet it would be removed if you put it to a vote to the citizens of London. Likewise, why are we putting in air conditioning to the existing secondary schools except for the pilot year-round? This again is not needed and would save hundreds of thousands of dollars. The amount of time, the amount of time you amortize the debentures over is far too little. Very few can pay for their house in that time span. I would strongly suggest you look at 20 or 25 years so that the existing and future burden can be shared by those who will reap the benefits 20 years from now as well. The rationale of improving school effectiveness as a reason to renovate must be monitored very closely. This is an area that could, this is an area that could very easily get out of hand. The recommendation to cancel Byron Southwood is a very good one. Also, to spend $1 million annually for the next three years to put in the science and technology centers in the elementary system is a wise direction. Purchasing new portables may help solve some current issues. If you say we really need the 10, then fine. However, keep as many options open and maybe even delay some capital expenditures due to the unknown variables, namely ministry funding, four-year secondary program, adult education, JK, open access schooling, net migration, and changes in the housing market. I can't and won't argue the Apple program today, but ask yourself, do we have the $400 to $800,000 extra that is going to be required? Your strategy and use of holding zones, although frustrating to many parents, is sound. The use of Lady Beck is also a good alternative. What I can't understand and disagree with is that of the French language section. Why do they need a brand-new school? Will they have enough students to fill it and who is going to pay? What is wrong with the Lady Beck site or maybe the Weeble site? Existing legislation must be changed here. How in the world can you have the planning and building of a French school under the exclusive jurisdiction of the FFL section but have the site acquisition and capital financing under the existing board's function? It should all be under the FFL and they pay all the costs associated with a brand-new school they want. Educational development charges are listed as a possibility revenue. It may be law within a few boards, but I sure wouldn't count on it. If I were to pay a few thousand extra for this when purchasing a house in a new subdivision, then I would expect a new school to go with it, not to be built five or seven years later or when the subdivision was full. I would also speculate you will be in for a real fight from the development and real estate industries. This administration has shown strong leadership and cooperation. They have presented the report that was asked of them from the trustees here tonight and previous boards. I believe they know all this can't be done and would strongly suggest you listen to them. I also think the administration should be more direct and opinionated on these issues as to priority setting and delaying of projects. This would hopefully help all of you. We definitely recommend scaling down the projects on an individual basis, delaying some of them and possibly the outright cancellation of some.
One minute.
Remember, you are the elected body of officials that chose to run. There is a clear consensus out there to curtail spending. HALT has a huge following. It is not wrong to say that we constitute an enormous silent majority that includes seniors, business, and parents with children in the system. We ask you to show the way and lead by example because the impact of this accommodation report you will decide on will impact the operating and capital size tremendously. It will also show leadership and responsibility when dealing with the other 85% in social contract when that comes up shortly. You can and will not please everyone. Think this situation through very carefully. Ask until you understand the impact and then vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. Will you please leave a copy of your brief with us, please? Trustee Alder?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Dunn, for your, your input. Very, a list of some very good ideas. Very, a list of some very good ideas and thoughts. I wanted to ask question clarification on the debenture issues. You recommend going from the current nine or 10 years up to 20 or 25. And yet, as you realize, I'm sure you recognize, of course, that that could mean substantially more money spent on interest. What would your thoughts be? What's your sense of justification in having the board spend more on interest?
Well, the ideal situation or world today would be, let's have the money in the bank, and if we need a new school renovation, take it out of the existing year's money and just pay for it. That's, like, that's the ideal thing. That's not the real world, I know that. To debenture out 10 years with the amount of money that we're talking and to have that load put on, like, all the people in here and the existing school system that we're involved in today, I think is a little bit unreasonable. In the long run, yes, it does cost more interest-wise. However, you know, I won't speak out of both sides here, but yes, we want money saved, but on the other hand, it's very, very reasonable to go out the 20 or 25 years, it really is. We're talking a huge amount of money here. And that's where I'm saying, you know, it's great to have all these things if we could get them done right away, but we can't. And, you know, with all the presentations that are going to come and all the schools want their own, that's great as well, but it's not there. And that's why, maybe they can get some of it, but let's put it out so the people, not only right now that are using it, but 15 and 20 and 30 years from now are going to enjoy it as well. And they should bear the burden, too.
Thank you.
Seeing no other, pardon, one other speaker, just would like to point out, too, Mr. Dunn, that we are having a look at our debentures, and those are some of the things that we are trying to examine at this point, all our options. Trustee McDonald?
Just a simple question, I appreciate the fact that you've made some suggestions. Do you and have you presented similar thoughts to the separate board?
Yes, if you, actually, if you look in the papers, I haven't presented since last April, maybe, but I, I'm involved with a separate system as well, and my comments are well-spoken to them as well. They don't have the input, I'll be quite candid, like you people do with the, like, I can go speak there any opening day, or any meeting that they have, but not on a set issue like tonight.
I, it's just that particularly with the French school, it's a joint thing, and so it makes it very difficult, and if you have had an opportunity to speak there, then that's very helpful. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. Are you going to leave a copy with us? Thank you very much. Item, Speaker number five has withdrawn, so Speaker number six is from Clark Road Secondary School Home and School, Sharon Harris.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Harris, and I'm a parent and member of Clark Road Home and School, and my friend is Val Richardson, who is the president of Clark Road Home and School. I want to begin by thanking the board for this opportunity to offer some thoughts from the Clark Road Secondary School community on the proposed renovations for our school. Coincidentally, these renovations are scheduled to begin in the 40th year of the operation of the school, which will be marked by a major reunion to be held on Thanksgiving weekend next October. I personally am very excited about this event, because I was one of the 14-year-old students who enrolled at the time of the school's opening 40 years ago. My first student card declared me to be a student at East Middlesex Composite High School. Aren't you glad the name was changed to a simpler Clark Road Secondary School? Over those 40 years, the first five of which our school was under the London Township School Authority before the 1961 annexation, much has changed at Clark Road. We became the designated senior composite school for the eastern third of the city of London. We were the first, and since last year's opening of the new developmental education center, we have the largest secondary developmental program in the city. Since the 1982 closing of Sir Adam Beck Secondary School, we are the only public secondary school south of Huron Street and east of Adelaide Street. Just last year, we became the designated school for the newly annexed land east of the former city boundaries, and we are now also the designated school for the emerging summer side development south of our current boundary. Clark Road Secondary School is an important part of the inventory of this Board of Education, and in order to remain such, it requires attention to its building. The first few years of the history of our school brought much building improvement and expansion. That activity has not been part of our school's history for too long. Much has deteriorated and not kept up with needed change. For the last 10 years, proposals for major maintenance have been deferred to the renovation project, which has been anticipated for at least that long. While our school community is well-aware of the difficulties the board faces in balancing needs against available resources, and while we might wish that the work required at our school could have been addressed in simpler fiscal times, we remain convinced that it is still urgently needed if the school is to remain viable and fulfill the mandate which the board has for it, even when times are tough. If the roof is leaking, the homeowner does whatever must be done to repair or replace it. Failure to do so only increases inevitable costs or ensures the destruction of the home. We have already experienced frequent postponements and are now at the stage where further delay will lead to higher future costs or leave the school unable to deliver the full program our children deserve. We are concerned that if the program upgrading is not done, many future students may seek alternatives to Clark Road. We urge you, therefore, to proceed with the proposed project for our school. Attention needs to be paid to the fabric of the building, to the issues of fire, life, and health safety, and perhaps most important in the long run, to the updating of program areas specified on pages 69 and 70 of the report. All are in urgent need of attention, and in the view of the community of Clark Road Secondary School, are not only warranted but overdue. The science facilities at the school have been the subject of many reports and comparisons over the years. They were not built to the standard of the London Board and continue to be too small to allow the sort of program which should be delivered. The drama facility and visual arts program are housed in converted classrooms, which cannot accommodate the new expectations of art students for all students, of art study, I'm sorry. There is nowhere suitable for the teaching of dance, which is now required in the grade nine program. The library, resource center, gymnasiums, and family studies facilities were initially identified for work in the 1980s. The school, in addition to the developmental programs already mentioned, accommodates physically challenged students. Proposals for renovation include upgrading in the halls, classroom labs, and to the auditorium to allow unimpeded access for wheelchairs. The proposed improvements in the technology facilities are essential for the delivery of broad-based programs now mandated in our province and fundamental to the mission of a senior composite school. The extensive use of the school building by generations of students and the passage of 40 years have taken their toll in wear and tear as well. All these factors combined to make the Clark Road Secondary School project an essential one for the continued success of this anchor of our community. We encourage your continued support of the initiative. We thank you for your attention and the opportunity to present our opinion.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Trustee Jaffe, I apologize for leaving you out, we'll catch you at the end of the Clark Road presentations. We have a second delegation from Clark Road Secondary School, Healthy School Committee. We have Lois Greer. Are there all, all three of you, okay? And Poppy Pizolenas and Joe Boland, and I apologize for the mispronunciation.
Members of the London Board, my name is Lois Greer. I am a public health nurse with the London Middlesex Health Unit. For the past three years, I've had the privilege of working with the students and the staff at Clark Road Secondary School. In this capacity, I have come to recognize the strong connection between health and learning. In order to have a healthier school, students, staff, parents, and other community members are involved in identifying needs, prioritizing them, and working towards improving the Clark Road school community. The voice of the students in this collaborative approach is a tremendous asset. The school's actual needs with proposed initiatives to enhance the school environment will be presented here tonight. The Healthy School Committee objectives are enhancing nutritional services, a wholesome environment, and increased facilities for physical education.
Good evening, I would like to introduce Joe Boland. Joe is actively involved in athletics and has many influences in various committees at Clark Road. He has been an honor student at Clark Road for three years.
Please allow me to introduce Poppy Pizolenas. Poppy has been an honor student for four years at Clark Road. She is an active student in athletics and is a member of Student Council. Clark Road is in its 40th year of operation. Poppy and I feel that Clark Road has excellent academic, co-curricular, and athletic programs. We speak on behalf of the Clark Road student body tonight. The students believe that the staff of Clark Road have provided a positive and helpful learning environment. Clark Road is a great school. Poppy and I understand that the students, staff, parents, and community members want to make the school even better. This is how it can be done. As a benefit to the school and the community, the upgrading of facilities can provide a healthier learning environment. Our areas of focus tonight are the cafeteria and an outdoor physical education area. The best use of space is an essential aspect of a facility. There are many advantages to maximizing space provided. A larger entrance to the cafeteria will make it accessible to physically challenged students, teachers, and others. Also, more service line area will benefit everyone because it will permit faster service to a greater number of people, allow everyone to pass the line quickly and efficiently, and enable anyone who brings a lunch to go to a table easily. Recycling and waste facilities are needed to maintain a healthy environment. Washrooms are the most important and therefore would be more accessible closer to the cafeteria. An area to accommodate a possible store for student fundraisers activities would encourage students or staff to centralize their activities where students and/or staff can actively participate.
The Student Council represents the entire student body. A more visible, excuse me, Students Council office will provide the means for Students Council representatives to provide social and academic activities. We need a new office. Enhancing the cafeteria's appearance and efficiency will improve Clark Road's atmosphere and food quality. A color scheme on the walls and matching chairs to reflect school colors would add more character to the cafeteria. Places to display student artwork and educational information in the form of bulletin boards, plexiglass-covered display cabinets, and murals would give students the opportunity to show their inspirational work. Given the opportunity to display their work, the students have a tool with which they can contribute to their community and school by expressing their thoughts and feelings through art. Closed-circuit monitors would provide students with the opportunity to research related curriculum and do their own programming. In order to facilitate these recommendations, it is necessary to have better acoustics, improved wiring, and increased lighting, and of course, the absence of poles. This would benefit the various activities that could be held in the cafeteria. These are necessary in consideration for multipurpose usage. Banquets, dances, receptions, dinners, and even karaoke are a few examples in which the cafeteria could become a community focus. Now Joe will talk to you about an outdoor physical education area.
Present gymnasium space is not normally available during lunch nor after school. An additional outside physical education area, for example, a basketball court or a baseball diamond, would promote good health and would be beneficial to the physical education facilities at Clark Road, as well as useful to the community as a whole. This new facility would improve relationships with our neighbors in the community and provide meaningful activities during school hours and after-hours to everyone.
The Healthy School Committee is investigating possible fundraisers and help from community services. The changes proposed reflect how students, staff, parents, and community members need to improve educational and health experiences. Clark Road students are proud Trojans who wish to display their achievements in the school for visitors, parents, and teachers. That way, everyone will appreciate their growth and accomplishments. The changes to the Clark Road environment will allow an active involvement of students on an ongoing basis. It promotes healthy eating in a healthy environment, an active lifestyle, and broadens the students' knowledge. The Healthy School Committee encourages you to support the Clark Road renovations in order to help us fulfill our goals. Mrs. Greer, Joe, and I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much, we always appreciate a student perspective and to help us to focus. Are there any questions? Trustee Brock?
Maybe just for clarification, in the report, it outlined the changes or that that would be completed? This evening, you've added some other areas, for instance, the ball diamond, et cetera. Are you talking, that's an area, it's not here, that would be the fundraiser?
Yes, we understand that community service agencies and businesses would be prepared to help us, but as part of your renovations, there may need to be some paving for a basketball court, but we are definitely looking at fundraising for the equipment necessary.
So what you're asking for is that the outline on 68 and 69, which includes the cafeteria, et cetera, is that that proceed as planned?
Yes.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much for your presentation, and we do have a copy of that one. Trustee Jaffe, you had an issue of clarification that you wanted to go back to, I wonder if you could tell us what subject area it is?
Just the comments on Sir Isaac Brock relative to Sherwood Forest, Sherwood Fox. I wondered if, through the chair, Mr. Campbell, if you could recall, I think there was a reference made to the differences in the two schools of why one, we proceeded with renovations in one school compared to the other. I just, my memory lapsed on...
Mr. Campbell?
Well, I think, I think there are a number of items that were identified by the presenters that are quite accurate statements. I think what you're dealing with in W. Sherwood Fox, that was a project that was done earlier. I mean, if you look at the table, some projects are done before some other schools. And I think you're dealing here with a school that is going to the board's direction of neighborhood JK to eight schools, unless there's any other direction from the board, then we, the recommendation with respect to Sir Isaac Brock's project is to extend it to full grade eight program, and that entails the various facility enhancements, not, perhaps not dissimilar to the ones described for W. Sherwood Fox.
Okay, so basically, Sir Isaac Brock was just a different place in the order?
Well, I think, I think it's fair to state that the direction of the board was to extend to grade eight as, on a timely base, I forget the specifics wording of the motion, but it was to bring those forward to the board periodically, which we, the administration has done. So it's in that context that it's because of the change, primarily because of the change to JK to eight school, the extension of grade seven and eight, that the enhancements would occur here.
Okay, thank you for refreshing my memory.
Trustee Bennett on this issue?
If I might, Madam Chairperson, just to help Trustee Jaffe refresh his memory a little more, at the time of the Sherwood Fox renovation, there also was an issue of property in phase six, which was proposed to build a new school, and there was discussion whether we would build a new school in phase six for that community or whether we would, in fact, renovate Sherwood Fox to make it seven and eight. So that was just another piece of the puzzle.
Thank you very much, Trustee Bennett. We can move now to item eight, Bev Kassar from Montcom Secondary School Home and School.
Good evening. I'm Bev Kassar. I'm president of the Montcom Home and School Association. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. It's important that you know what the community is thinking. Last year, when I stood here to tell you that Montcom did not want to be a pilot for year-round education, I also told you that we did want the technological renovations that you proposed in the accommodation report. A need was identified that we wanted addressed. You agreed on both points, and Montcom was at the front of the line for the scheduled renovations. The Montcom community was very pleased and felt that you had listened to us. Soon after, articles started appearing in the Free Press about the proposed renovations that were being discussed at the board meetings. Montcom's name was never in the list of schools mentioned. I would phone Gary Jaysey, Montcom's principal, and he would, in turn, would call the appropriate people at the board to ask why Montcom wasn't listed in the articles. We were told that Montcom was still at the front of the line, that it was the Free Press had left it out, it was their mistake. This happened a number of times, but we are always reassured, Montcom was still on the first of the renovation list. In December, when the new accommodation planning report was released, it turned out that the Free Press was correct after all. Montcom was not at the front of the renovation list anymore. We had been bumped to the end of the line. The proposed renovation date was now nineteen ninety-nine. This was a slap in the face to the Montcom community. The perception is that Montcom is being punished for not accepting year-round education. What happened to the technological needs that were identified just a year ago? This long delay to the promised technology has been demoralizing for staff, students, and community. Montcom's staff is superb. Gary Jaysey is an enthusiastic and inspirational leader. The staff is second to none, but they are being handcuffed by the lack of technological equipment. They are asked to deliver a program of broad-based technology and are doing the best that they can, but how can they be expected to give our students the ability to compete with students from other schools when Montcom does not have the necessary equipment? Most of you don't want to believe this, but there are have-and-have-not schools in London. There is not an equitable distribution of technology. If Montcom does not get these renovations soon, the gap will be even wider. We have eight-year-old computers that can't handle this current software. The computers have sixty megabyte hard drives and were out of date when they were put in the schools. The smallest drive that you can buy today is six hundred and forty megabyte, over ten times larger than Montcom's drives. We have a communications technology program that cannot log onto the Internet because it doesn't have a modem. Today, the London Board of Education for the City of London Schools are in competition with the Roman Catholic Schools. Increased numbers of secondary school students are choosing to attend the separate schools each year. When the new separate school, St. Thomas Aquinas, opened, Oakridge Secondary School had major renovations completed right around the same time. Now, I know that no one around this circle will state publicly that these renovations were done in order to compete with the new separate school down the street, but the perception is that's exactly why they were done. Montcom had a new separate secondary school open just down the road from them also. When I asked Bob Campbell what Montcom got to compete with John Paul Two, I was told that's what our electric sign was for. We like our sign, but we'd gladly trade it for just some of the renovations that Oakridge got. It seems as if we're located in the wrong end of town for major renovations. There are excellent things happening at Montcom, although you wouldn't know it from reading the Free Press. It's difficult letting our community know about the good things that are going on. The grade-eight students in our family of schools see a shiny new separate school with current technology and compare it with a twenty-seven-year-old Montcom with no major renovations in that time, although it does have an electronic sign. They don't read about the place being at John Paul on almost a daily basis, but if a knife comes within two blocks of Montcom, it's headline news. Is it any wonder that we're losing students to John Paul? We want to be able to compete. We want our students to have the same skills as offered at other secondary schools. Some of our feeder schools have been identified as compensatory schools. They consistently score in the lower end of the reading scores. These students need all the help that they can get if they're going to develop transferable skills when they graduate. They need access to a variety of resources for broad-based technology programs. They need more than eight-year-old computers. Many families in the Montcom community cannot afford to have a computer and modem at home. How are these students supposed to get the specialized training that is required to enter a community college or university? They need and deserve to be given the opportunity to benefit from a combined theory and hands-on learning experience. Montcom can now only teach about doing research, not offer the technology to do it. My oldest son graduated from Montcom last year. He is currently enrolled in Computer Science at Western. I asked him if he thought he would be there in Computer Science if he had to rely on what he had learned at Montcom, if he did not have a computer and a modem at home. You shouldn't be surprised by his reply. He thought that it would be virtually impossible to have the knowledge required if only relying on the knowledge gained from the technological equipment at Montcom. I know that there's not enough money to do all the renovations that are required across the city. I know that some renovations are not going to happen for a long time. I also know that Montcom needs a major technology upgrade, and it would be in the best interest of our students. We want our spot back at the front of the line. We're tired of being a have-not school. We're fed up with being written off. We are proud to be EOA, proud of our staff, proud of our students. Montcom is falling farther behind other schools and needs significant upgrades. Some schools are more than a decade ahead of us in their technology. We have immediate needs. Our students deserve to have equal opportunities. I'm asking you to invest in the Montcom community. Don't think of the dollars as being spent on equipment, think of it as being spent on our students. Give our students an equal chance. We are asking for a level playing field. Please let Montcom have the technological renovations that you promised us last year. Please move us back to the front of the line.
Thank you, Bev. We do have a copy of the presentation that we'll be able to distribute later. Trustee Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. My question isn't for Bev, but clarification question, Mr. Campbell, if I might. And I guess before I ask him the question, just to Bev, I emphasize with your frustration. But for our clarification, were there other schools, there were other schools on the list that were identified to get the technology centers for program reasons. Were any of those other high schools' dates changed in this report?
Every single one, I believe, was changed, Madam Chairperson. Just to expand on that comment, on Table fifteen, which is the timetable, and I think that's what the speaker's been addressing, there are sixteen projects listed on page forty-seven, Table fifteen, that were delayed more than one semester. Nine of them were delayed two or more years. So that, I think, to put it in the context, put your question in the context, I think you have to go back to page forty-three and look at the reasons for the revised schedule, not the least of which was Section Two of the report on the financing and the debenture load, and I think Mr. Dunn spoke at some length on that point. We've talked about, we've indicated six factors, which I won't repeat, that we covered, I think, in the presentation when the report was first presented. What I can assure the trustees is that the revised schedule reflects those factors cited there on page forty-three. I also would point out that the change in the schedule from December nineteen ninety-four report, you recall that the last line was nineteen ninety-nine, the last line on this report is two thousand and three. And I think what it does speak to, Madam Chairperson, is the elongation of the schedule for the reasons indicated on page forty-three. Having said that, I might comment specifically with respect to two pairs of schools. I think some members of the board will recall that Lucas and Westminster were essentially twin schools, built at the same time by the board, and Banting and Montcom were also twin schools. As a matter of fact, it was the same construction contract, they both were built at the same time. Reason I know that quite vividly, I was one of the charter members of the Montcom staff as a department at the time. So I think the question of if we're going to be doing a renovation, there are some obvious economies of scale, dealing with schools that are on a, that have essentially relatively identical floor plans in those renovations. Banting and Montcom are twin schools, Lucas and Westminster are also twin schools. So I'm only, perhaps I'm going beyond the original ten-year question, Trustee Bennett, but I think I want to emphasize that the connotation that the speaker brought forward, I think we do empathize with the frustration. I can assure you, we've had calls from a significant number of eighteen schools that have had their dates moved, sixteen of them more than a semester, and we've had some discussion with other communities who have also been moved by more than two years. And I think, not to defend the table as such, but simply to go back and reiterate what the criteria were, and I think the essence of Section Two is whether the board can afford to do it, and whether in fact the construction can even be done in the time period. I won't comment about the empathizing with the change in the schedule. I can assure you, the administration wrestled long and hard in bringing in a revised Table Fifteen, and I think was fully appreciative of the kind of frustrations that individual communities, some of which had, you're going to hear from other communities later on this evening, who also find their date is two or three years later. So we do have empathy with that, but I would go back to page forty-three, and I think you have to put, have to put the timetable into the context of the overall board financial situation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Anything further, Trustee Bennett? Trustee Jaffe?
Just a follow-up question on that. Briefly, could you go over the factors if you're, if we're looking at Montcom versus Clark Road, and I don't want to, I'm not pitting one school committee against another, but I just want to, could you go over the factors? You referred to the factors on page forty-three in the report. Could you just review briefly, what would the different factors be that would accelerate one project compared to another?
Well, I think I can, perhaps Mr. Vernell would be better one to answer that, but let me, let me give a first kick at it. I think when it comes to technology, the whole issue of technology has been discussed around this worship for many, many hours, on many evenings over the last five to seven years. And I think it's recognized that from any three corridors in the east, from Clark Road and Beale, and the central corridor and Saunders, and the western corridor, those historically have been your three senior composite schools as far as technology goes. Again, the technology report indicating the offerings of programs, there clearly was an understanding from day one on the part of the board when it made the decisions there, that those three projects would move forward first, and that the other schools would follow there. Now, as to, I would say that as to which of those schools you do, you can, you know, you could have a different schedule and a different sequence of the other schools. And clearly, that's one of the areas of frustration for any school that's delayed.
Mr. Vernell, anything you'd like to add?
No, just basically, the degree of sophistication, obviously, between a composite and a senior composite school.
Anything further, Trustee Jaffe?
Not right now.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much, Bev. Number nine, there has been a change in the presenters. It'll be Montcom Secondary School Student Council, represented by Kim Lacy and Josh Chadwick.
My name is Kim Lacy, and this is Josh Chadwick. As student leaders of Montcom Secondary School, we endeavor to look out for the best interests of the students at our school. That is why we are here tonight. The last time I was up here, I made a presentation opposing year-end education at Montcom Secondary School. When this very controversial topic was proposed for our school, we were told that our school's technological renovations would be pushed forward to coincide with the proposed initiation date for this pilot project. When the proposed project was defeated, we asked that our renovations not be pushed back again to the end of the list. We were told that construction at our school would still begin at the new earlier date. But when the updated schedule for renovations to schools was distributed, Montcom was once again pushed farther down the list of schools.
We realized that the renovations had to be pushed back due to the budget cutbacks. It's not why we're upset. It does not seem fair that we have, that we would have the renovations to our technology wing done early, and now they have been pushed behind other schools that we were originally ahead of. The technological knowledge is very important to our students, and the more knowledge and the skills that they have, the better equipped they will be to find employment in the future. Many students at Montcom are focusing on the technological part of their schooling, and it's necessary for them to have the technological base in order to get a job in the future. Now that our renovations have been pushed back, it will be much longer before they will have the necessary skills.
What we are asking for is simple. We ask that you reconsider the proposed date for Montcom's renovations. We ask that you live up to the promises you have made. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much for representing the students at your school. Speaker number ten from Byron Southwood, PTA, Tracy DeVono.
Is it DeVono or Devoe?
I asked that question, too. It's DeVono.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tracy DeVono, and I represent Byron Southwood as the PSA President. I've come this evening to present our views regarding Byron Southwood's position on the reconstruction list. In order to prepare for this evening's presentation, a detailed letter was sent home to all of Byron Southwood's families, and it briefly stated the issues and invited them to attend a January sixteen meeting so that they could have a say. You'll find a copy of this letter included with your presentation literature. Some of Byron Southwood's history. In looking at the school plan, Byron Southwood was built initially in nineteen fifty-four, and since that time has required five additions to accommodate growth. In nineteen eighty-nine, it was decided to put Byron Southwood on the reconstruction list due to structural inconsistencies that did not meet with the board's standards. Any emergent changes that were needed were taken care of at the time of review. However, in order to bring the site up to the board's current standards, it was deemed that reconstruction would be necessary. In nineteen ninety, the board authorized the purchase of a Bowler Road residence to ensure easier access to the school once reconstruction took place. In December of nineteen ninety, approval for the purchase of a six-room Portapack unit was made. And in nineteen ninety-one, the board deferred the date of reconstruction of Byron Southwood to nineteen ninety-eight. Reconstruction versus maintenance of Byron Southwood. In review of the accommodation plan document, the following financial aspects were looked at, and I will review what we understand from this document. The Ministry of Education and Training provides grants of approximately fifty percent to build new schools, and that the criteria for building a new school is based on student population growth and not on the standards of the facilities required. That being said, we understand that Byron Southwood is not in a growth area at this time, and therefore, no provincial grant would be forthcoming, and funding would need to be entirely from the local board. In looking at the debenture schedule and in review of the accommodation document, we understand that the board's projected debt in the year two thousand and five has changed considerably from ten million dollars in nineteen ninety-five to seventy-five million dollars in nineteen ninety-six. This increases principal and interest payments alone by double. Why? Simply too many new projects. In fact, a hundred and eighty-two-point-two million dollars' worth, as seen in Appendixes A, B, and C. With today's economy, it is clear that cuts from somewhere need to be made in order to decrease the debt load. We have found that interest alone on a nine-million-dollar school for Byron Southwood would be seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars in the first year. This increases principal and interest payments alone by double. Why? Simply too many new projects. In fact, $182.2 million worth, as seen in appendixes A, B, and C. With today's economy, it is clear that cuts from somewhere need to be made in order to decrease, decrease the debt load. We have found that interest alone on a $9 million school for Byron Southwood would be $711,000 in the first year. And it looks like we need to be spending more than that amount of money in improvements and operating costs to make rebuilding feasible. We have had an estimate of approximately $350,000 for a new roof, hall flooring, exterior doors and rekeying, updates to the interior ceiling and light fixtures, and upgrades, and upgrades to the heat. As you can see, this is approximately half of what a first, of what a first year's interest would be, interest payment would be. So therefore, what does Byron Southwood want? The bottom line is, the families of Byron Southwood want an environment that is conducive to good quality education for their children. We would like to point out that we are very pleased with the response our school has received when repairs and improvements have been needed to date, and I have included a list of the most recent repairs for you to review. What do we feel we need to improve the learning environment of Byron Southwood? There are a list of repairs and upgrades that we require at this time, and we feel that if the decision is made to remove Byron Southwood from the reconstruction list, that these upgrades should be made priority. We have grouped them according to the board's definitions of mandatory, essential, highly recommended, and desirable. I've mentioned some of these upgrades earlier, and therefore, I will leave them for you to review. However, I would like to make mention of request number 13. Although our children are receiving the science and technology program at another school, they have to spend a considerable amount of time walking to this location. And if we are removed from the reconstruction list, we feel that we should receive higher priority in adding this program to our school, and would like it in place for the September 1996 year. In closing, I would like to thank you for your time and attention. We are entrusting you to review the facts that we have brought forth to you this evening, and to make a decision that would quote, "respect the economic realities faced by ratepayers and local businesses," yet maintain a high quality of education for our children that we have grown to appreciate from the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Are there any questions from the trustees? Seeing none, thank you very much. Sorry, trustee Jocelyn?
Just a question of clarification through to administration.
Is this for, for Tracy or administration?
Thank you. Can you clarify for me when sometime we moved people out of Byron Southwood to put a new roof on? Where are we with that?
Can you restate your question, trustee Jocelyn? I'm not sure whether...
I'm a bit confused about the new roof on the, the comments, because sometime in the time I was a trustee, I think that the, the students were moved out of Byron Southwood, and a new roof was put on that school, and I just need some clarification.
Mr. McElwain has a response?
Chairperson, my understanding, it was prior to my arrival at the board, but I think it was roughly in the timeframe of 1986, '87, where there was some structural work required on the roof. What we're talking about now is essentially just roofing. It's not structural.
Any further questions? We could move to number 11, Steve Schenk from the Masonville Home and School. There is a copy on your desk from the Masonville group?
My name is not Stephen Schenk. Stephen got very lucky and has a last-minute club membership and isn't here, but I'm pleased to be batting number two for the Masonville School. My name is Gordon Good, and I just ask the Masonville supporters and representatives to raise their hands in the back room there, let everybody know we're here. Cheap trick, but it worked. If I can direct everyone's attention to both the written report and page 76 of the Accommodation and Planning Report, page 76 will give you the excellent background to this particular project prepared by your administration. And I've also indicated, supplied everyone with a map, and just to give you some background as to where this particular project is.
Gordon, I apologize, we don't have a copy of the map, so we'll see that everybody gets it.
I just handed one out. You don't have one. There's yours. Never do that to the boss.
You have the wrong impression.
If I can direct your attention to the map, this is the Masonville area, carefully highlighted in, in yellow, and you will note that the tiny pink dot is the current Masonville school, started in 1947, and it shows. The green dot, the large green dot, is the vacant land anxiously awaiting the new Masonville school. You'll note that the available land is right in the middle of the subdivision. When Masonville was built, it was in the county. It was a long way from everywhere, and you can see that it is in the far northeast corner of what is now a large subdivision. The reference to Ambleside is the dividing line between a older section of the area and a newer section. All that area to the west of Masonville is currently under development. There's about maybe a third of the houses in there. The lots are there, they're ready to go. You read your London Free Press today, you can see what's happened with interest rates, and if that continues, there's a, I'm sure everybody's agreed, a pent-up demand for new housing, and it's going to happen. And that has been identified by your administration. A school originally built in 1857, the current building in 1947. We had a plumber in the building. The plumber went downstairs, and he wanted to look at some plumbing, and he had occasion to look at the concrete floor. And he said, "Ladies and gentlemen, you better get your students out of that school because that concrete floor is going to collapse." That was fixed in 1993, some $50,000 to $60,000. There's currently eight portables. There are currently 10 classrooms. Of the 10 classrooms, only three are on the ground floor. We have some special needs children. Those special needs children cannot be accommodated on the second floor. What's going to have to happen is an entire reorganization of the school is going to have to take place to put a senior grade downstairs in order to facilitate this particular problem. As I understand your rule, your number one rule is accommodation. You have to find physical plant for students. And the numbers are set out on page 76 of the report. The current enrollment, as indicated, is 418 students. That number is old. The current number as of Christmas is 426. The projection, if you add up the numbers on page 76, is for another 320 to 410 students. Now, when I get that number, I'm including the Highland Development, and that Highland Development is immediately to the north, which is outside the current school area, just north of Fanshawe Park Road. That area is designated for Lorner. When that project gets developed, unless this problem is solved, you're going to be busing people to Lorner. And if you're going to be spending money on busing, you're spending money without getting any return on your dollar. The increase is going to occur over the next three or four years, and it's going to be a gradual increase. The current program says 1999. That's been put off again from 1988, or 1998, 1997, 1996, 1995. Every year it gets put off, and we're all in the same boat, and everybody's complaining about the same thing, so that's fine, save and except we have a particular problem at Masonville. At Masonville, we have one washroom for each gender. Not to belittle anybody else's complaints, but we're not talking about paint, we're talking about washroom facilities. The current building code is at its maximum. The solution is, to student increase in enrollment, we'll add another portable. The problem with adding another portable is that you're then going to be in violation of the Ontario Building Code, and you're going to have to put in new washrooms. And well, let's spend some money and put in new washrooms. Well, where are we going to put those? Well, we can put them in the library. What happens to the library? There's no room left in the library. The, the problem is chronic. You've been able to postpone it, and the economy has helped. The economy has helped because we don't have new, new houses going up, we don't have an increase in enrollment. That isn't going to last till 1999. Design and technology. This board has a policy of implementing design and technology. We've been very clever. We put Masonville in the last year. Why? Because we're going to build a new school. 1997 is when that implementation is to take place for design and technology. If you spend the money in 1997 to put in design and technology in Masonville, as you're committed to doing, and then find, as inevitably you will find, you're going to have to build a new school, you're spending money twice. The current busing situation, what you're doing now is you're busing all the people from the west to the far corner of Masonville. And what's happened is, is the population, like this country, is going west. And the advantage to the busing problem is by putting the school in the center is you're reducing your busing costs.
One minute?
Thank you. The bottom line problem we have is that you don't want to build this school without provincial money. We understand that. We're not stupid people. We understand that if the province is going to give you money, $2.4 million to put in a new school, it doesn't make sense to build a new school without getting that money. And that's what this report does, is it again postpones building this school in the hopes that this provincial money is going to show up. At some point in time, this board is going to have to come to grips with building this school without that provincial money. There's a rumor we're going to have omnibus number two. And what's going to happen is, is the ministry is going to give you your capital grant in a reduced format, a reduced amount of money, and you're going to have to take the bull by the horns, ladies and gentlemen, in my respectful submission, to do that, and ensure that this school is built. If you adopt recommendation 7.4, you have $9 million left, or in additional funds, to spend. And if you look at table 15 of your report on page 47, you've got Masonville for August of 1999. You adopt your administration's position that the Southwood reconstruction be amended, you're moving at a very minimum the Masonville school up into that slot.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you. I will.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Trustee Brock?
What you're suggesting is that if you move it to 98, you would likewise move the science and technology out of 97, so it would be done once at the new school.
Practically speaking, it makes sense to move it to 97, so you're not spending money twice. The bottom line is, is when you look at what the projected enrollment is for this area, you're going to be building two schools. When you look to the north for the Highlands Project and busing people to Lorner, that's a non-starter to bus people to Lorner because it costs you money. The catchment area goes up to Sunningdale Road. The development in the city of London is going north. There is going to be, I am sure, development to the north. You've got to figure out what you're going to do with the old Masonville school. One, you use it as a French immersion program, French immersion school, depending upon your numbers. In the alternative, you're still using that school. Why? Because you've got the numbers to support it. And that's the bottom line, is numbers. And the people are there, and they're moving in.
So the answer to my question is that preferably 97.
97 saves you money by not spending it twice.
Yeah, but 98 was to take the opening slot if, if recommendation rebuy Byron Southwood is approved, which then would make sense to move the 97 technology to 98, do it in the new school.
And it does, it does make financial sense to do that. We hear of some schools complaining about their low-grade, low-memory PCs. Masonville is still on the ICOM system. We are a generation removed from the PC system, and we're a long way behind, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Townsend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have a question for Gordon, but I do appreciate him coming down and sharing the frustration that, that we all feel, because it's certainly been a priority for us, the Masonville school. But I guess, just in a clarification to the, to the administration, I know that, I know that, I guess we're, we're, our hands are tied in the sense that as long as it qualifies for, for grant allocation, and it does, obviously, I mean, it doesn't take anybody long to go through that school to, to realize that that school's not going to meet the needs of that community, the way the community's growing and the age of the school. And that's why it's a number one priority. But just reading the report, I mean, although the, the years have shifted, it still remains our, our new building priority. Isn't that correct? I mean, we don't see, there's, there's no reason for it to be, to, to be bumped, other than the fact that as long as it does qualify for grant allocation, we are sort of stuck with the existing process that the ministry has in place, or non-process, whatever. But, but certainly, I mean, if, if we get direction from the, from the ministry, something has to be done with that school in the near future. And certainly, that's where the community could be, could be useful too, because as partners, any opportunity that the community has to, to raise the issue with any provincial government representatives is appreciated in our part too. But, but to Mr. Campbell, I, the, the administration doesn't see any, any lessening of the need for the, for a new facility in that area, I'm sure.
Madam Chairperson, we, we again updated the capital expenditure forecast of the board to the ministry, the regional office, at the end of August. And Masonville, of course, is the, the top priority request, as it has been, to the ministry. I think the only difference in the updating we did this summer was, was that the need was, it was easier to demonstrate the need because of the, again, the updated numbers. But to directly answer your question, clearly, it's number one, I think the difficulty you've got, and just speaking quickly to the timing, the ministry has not yet announced what it's going to do with the allocations that it, that it awarded to this board in June 1994. So I think the reality of what you're dealing with is that where, one likes to be optimistic that in the spring of 96, the provincial government will confirm the allocations it awarded to you. you two years ago that have been in advance. We're assuming rightly or wrongly that the next wave of allocations, if there are any thereafter, the provincial government's still in that business, as they have traditionally been, might not be until sometime in the 96, 97 school year. And traditionally, these things have been announced in the spring. So if all the provincial government were to do was to review its allocations that it awarded provincially two years ago this spring, and the next cycle were to pick up Masonville, which is the top, the highest priority project of the board that would qualify for ministry funding, the probability is that that wouldn't be announced, barring a real turnabout in the economy and a miracle. If we made both, would be the spring of 97. Given that reality, the design, tendering, construction time would put that school into the 99 year. Now, the other comment I would make, just to kind of put it in perspective, this is a real catch-22. Because if the government, we're hesitant as an administration to advocate the government change, because you could get something as mindless as, oh, whatever money we've got, we'll just send it out on a per capita basis to every board across Ontario, whether they're in a growth board or not. So boards that I shall not name, that don't appear to be growing, might get a share of that provincial funding. So we've always taken the position, I think the board has, you want to attract those grants. But if the ministry were to get out of the business, or have something fundamentally different, like awarding money out to the board and saying, not tying it to projects, here's the money, here's all we have, the cupboard's bare, you decide locally, then I can assure you that you would see a different-looking table, for the reason that the presenter talked about, that Masonville is only deferred because of the deferrals and the announcement of ministry capital allocations. It has nothing to do with the need and any change on that. The need has become greater in the intervening year, and will be greater a year from now, as I think the presenter indicated. So I think, Trustee Townsend, you summarized it very well. You are already caught in the dilemma that you, in fact, are proceeding with projects that are very important, but the speaker commented about the economy. You're going to have a king-size problem, and very, very shortly, in accommodating students in that portion of the city, as Mr. Owens has indicated previously.
The only hope we can ask for is that you speed up that process to spend money here to be ready to go when that provincial money comes. Because every year we put this off is going to be a bigger problem for this board, and you're going to be spending money that you're not going to recover. And we're hoping that we're being common sense about it, and it makes sense, at some point in time, to spend money on something you can look at and use forever, as opposed to spending it twice, or spending it on busing.
I think one of the other difficulties we have as a board, too, is that if we put the shovel on the ground, we, the hopes of getting any provincial money, you're just about nil.
We can do the planning process.
Trustee Sutherland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is not to Mr. Good at all, it's to the administration for clarification, for myself, if I might. I just threw you, Madam Chair, to the administration. Could I make sure that I do not have a typographical error on the cover sheet of my December 12, 1995 document? Mine says Accommodation Planning Report. Where on here do I see it say Accommodation Promise Report?
I think that's kind of redundant.
There is no typo that we've been able to identify in the cover.
This is, in fact, a planning document and not a promise of things to come. It's a plan that we're putting in place. Would that be a correct analogy?
Trustee Alder?
I have a question, one for Mr. Good and one through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Campbell. First, to Mr. Campbell, given what your comments relates to the ministry approval, even if the recommendation regarding Byron Southwood were approved by this board, it doesn't necessarily mean that Masonville would move up into that slot. Is that correct?
Well, that's correct. I mean, those are, while the speaker chose to link those two, the one doesn't follow in terms of our report preparation. We presented the issue in 7.4 on its own. I think what we're saying here, and I don't want to repeat my comments that I made in response to Trustee Townsend's question and comments, you know, unless something changes in provincial capital allocation, the board's going to have to reassess its position about starting a project before you get the grant, as the chairperson indicated. And therein lies the dilemma, both for the board as a whole, and particularly for the Masonville community, because, but direct answer to your question, no, it would not be a substitution in our mind. There's nothing to substitute until the capital question is...
Right.
Really, what we would prefer to see, I suppose, for administrative tidiness, would be to either announce the allocations, or say we're no longer in that business. What you've got is one project just held in Never Ever Land as we drift along this capital allocation thing year after year.
Then my second question to you, Mr. Good. You made a comment that we should spend money now in order to be ready for, to move on this project, once the approval comes through. Could you help me understand?
Well, I was directing my comments, and I'm out of my league here in a big way, but in terms of the delay between getting capital funding from the province, and then putting a shovel in the ground, as I understand, Mr. Campbell, that's a, am I correct, a two-year process? You get an announcement in the spring of 97, and you don't have anything ready to occupy until August of 99. I don't know the answer to that, but if there's a way of working on that now, or at the appropriate time, you can shorten that process, get the school built a year earlier, and save this Board of Education a year's worth of extra expenses, because you know you're going to have to build it. And I guess that's the bottom line, is if this provincial government continues to stay out of capital funding, as they have since 1994, this board may be faced with building this school without any provincial money. And that's a big choice to make, but that's what you're going to be faced with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please, one more question. Trustee Brock?
Madam Chairperson, I guess it's important that we walk away with the same understanding. Mr. Good has alluded to it, and I think he just did it again. The fact of the matter is that if the province comes along in the next 60 days and says, we're going to give you X rather than for specifics, but we're going to give you X dollars for capital projects, and you determine on the local level, if that were the case, I mean, if they were to do that sometime this year, noting that Mr. Campbell already made reference, we still haven't got finality on previous approvals, if that were to happen, you would revisit Table 15?
I would revisit Table 15.
Mr. Campbell would revisit Table 15?
Mr. Campbell?
I sure would. We'd be in 97.
I thought that's what you said. I was for sure that's what you said. I just wanted to make sure that the administration, you and I, were on the same wavelength.
Yeah.
There sure is.
I would say this in response to the board chairperson's comment. I don't want to identify anything, because people get a little excited when their project appears to be bumped. This is the highest project, priority project, and has been in that relative position for a growth project for the board. Clearly, if you had the funds and had the go-ahead, you would not be seeing it down there. You would be moving on it at an earlier date. There is no question about that. I would qualify it as to how far up it would go. I think we also have to take a look at other accommodation in the system. There are other issues, there are other holding zones, you recall in Mr. Owens' presentation, when we presented the report, there was some discussion about holding zones. I make that as a generic comment, not as one that's specific to the Masonville question. But clearly, clearly, it's not down there because it's not a high-priority project. It's down, it is down at that distance, and it, essentially, because of the capital problem that has been discussed by several of the trustees and the speaker.
I would just also like to draw the trustees' attention to Table Number Three, where it identifies that, in fact, when we have been granted some capital allocations, it hasn't always happened in the year that the school has had to open, and we have had to do some interim operating fund financing in those areas. So it's something we've had to look at, and just to keep in mind, when we get an announcement, it doesn't mean it's going to fit our timeline. Thank you very much, Mr. Good.
Thank you.
I just got a clarification from the trustees, whether we still have six more speakers. Do we need a five-minute Parkinson break? If we could have five minutes, and I will ask you, please be back, I will say seven, 10 past nine. From the Apple program at Brick Street, Sharon Sander.
This is not school technology, just so everybody knows. Okay. We're here this evening to continue the open communication that Apple has with this board. One method we have is through our advisory committee, and the membership is made up of parents, teaching staff, administration, and trustees. We've also presented here twice in the last year, in March and in October, and at those, whoop, and at those two presentations, we made previous recommendations regarding continuance and commitment to the program, extension to grade seven to eight, and accommodation in proposed schools. We proposed accommodation in those schools as an alternative solution to the increased demand that we have for our program. Each year, we get a waiting list, and we're not able to accommodate all of the people who are actually willing to make the drive out to the school. That's not all the people who are interested in the program, those are all the ones who are willing to actually attend at Brick Street. The recommendation was referred to administration for inclusion in the accommodation report in December. When the accommodation report came out, it was noted that the financial impact on any one of the three schools would be $400,000 to $800,000, depending on whether five to 10 classes were built, covering grades JK to eight. We presently go from JK to six. One of our recommendations was in regard to extending the program to seven and eight. Our community cited this as a priority during the strategic planning process in January of 95. Although the recommendation was brought forward, there was no motion or referral made, and so the community pursued this through our advisory committee, looking for a solution and a way to accommodate grade seven and eight for our program as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, geographic, fiscal, and accommodation issues have so far prevented a solution to this problem, but we're still looking. And the final recommendation regarded a commitment to our program. We requested that specifically in our presentation in October, and while the issue was raised, there was no motion or referral made at that time. And then we have to look at the people I'm speaking with tonight in your decision-making process. Right now, you have a lot of demands regarding the provision of programs and services with the reduced resources, and just tonight, I've been taking notes, you've been asked to make sure there's no increase in your debt load, you've been asked to provide equitable facilities and technology for all schools, you've been asked to expand and complete proposed projects, and you've been asked to reduce and eliminate proposed projects. Yep, tough decisions to make, and you've got a climate of uncertainty with the lack of information and the delay in information coming forward from the ministry. It's a difficult situation for you. People are coming forward and asking you to continue with things, and without that commitment, you're not sure what to tell people. In providing the Apple program, we have 123 students and 90 families whose needs are being met currently. It requires no extra human or fiscal resources from this board to provide the program. In November and December alone of this past year, and this includes the two weeks vacation, at the time I wrote this, there were more than 1,985 hours put in, and at last count, over 2,000 hours of volunteer time were put in by parents in the Apple program. The majority of that time is in the classroom, generally, in any two-month period, that's 40 to 50 percent of the time given, is directly in the classroom. The remainder of the time is spread between general meetings, enrichment meetings, which are for the classroom to discuss specific enrichment strategies for the upcoming themes, committee meetings, committee work, classroom support, and special activities. And a lot of that classroom support is preparation of materials, research, and gaining resources for the classroom. What a commitment can do for our program is to allow us to focus on supporting our program without worrying about continuity. Sort of a similar thing that's happening here. We don't know what's happening, we wonder from year to year whether we're going to be there, if the resource is going to be there. Without that commitment, it's very difficult to know, and it's difficult to concentrate our energies on what we really do best, and what we're really there for, which is for our students, for our classrooms, and to enrich and enhance the education that our students receive. It also provides this board with an opportunity to support enrichment of curriculum. And it's very simple, it's simple because the board actually just has to make the commitment, it's up to our community to provide that enrichment. And it also provides you a unique opportunity to demonstrate support for meaningful, active partnerships with the community, and I loved the conversations I heard here last week all around parent councils. I know from what I heard that this board is very committed to parents being involved in education. So we like to make a very respectful suggestion. Whereas the Apple program continues to meet the needs of its community without demands on the diminishing resources of this board, and whereas the Apple program continues to generate interest in new families each year, and whereas the philosophy of the Apple program promotes the active partnership between home and school, and whereas the Board of Education for the City of London supports the participation of parents in education, therefore, be it resolved that the Apple program be allowed to maintain its current size of five full-time classrooms until such time as a mutually agreeable site is determined. That's it. Any questions or comments?
I had to push the button without you, Mr. Director. He gets really upset when I play with his buttons. Is it? Are there any questions?
One for the chairperson.
Only one?
Well, okay, ten.
Seeing no questions, thank you. Trustee Brock?
Then, in fact, right now, there is currently five classrooms in operation, and it, maybe through the administration, the school can accommodate that, there is no enrollment of that?
Mr. Owens?
I'm chairperson three. We currently have six portables on the site to house the total student population, which I believe in September 30th was 444 students. Our projected enrollment for the school shows that enrollment will increase next year slightly. That includes the Apple component, of course, I should clarify that. So the school, the resident school population with the existing Apple program will have a slight increase. Beyond that, we do not see any significant changes in that population base, based on the preschool data that we have currently available. We really couldn't predict anything beyond that point.
So it's okay for the next year?
Chairperson, yes.
That's it, okay. And when you're talking mutually agreeable standalone site, so that means an existing school site, or?
I think that the community is open to some discussion. As the board knows, the Lady Beck site was discussed. That, while may have solved some problems for the board, didn't solve and actually created more problems for the program. So it needs to be something that's worked with the dialogue that we have going.
So is it fair to say, and I don't want to make an assumption, that as representative of the Apple program, that your group is looking at other options or alternatives, or are you waiting for something to?
Independently, we keep our ear to the ground.
Thank you.
And we do, and we have come forward to advisory when we've heard...
And we do, and we have come forward to advisory when we've heard rumors of possibilities.
Thank you.
Kirsty McLennigan.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, and this question is to Mr. Owens. And I guess as I walk along Center Street from time to time, I'm aware that there's the potential for a fairly significant piece of property there to be developed, adjacent to an area where there are obviously some sixty or seventy units. I suspect if that development were to go ahead, that Brick Street School would be swamped, and we have a very limited site to begin with, do we not, with respect to the number of portables that can be placed in that yard?
Madam Chairperson, correct that it's limited in terms of the number, we probably could get maybe another portable on, that would probably be the limit. The particular parcel that you're referring to is the subject of some discussion right now, as a matter of fact, on Center Street. The current application is for a complex of single and semi-detached units. The developer may change his mind in terms of that request, but as of today, that is what they are considering as an application. That produces somewhat lower density, of course, than the multifamily immediately to the west of that on Center Street. Based upon the timing that we understand from the developer, again, it's at least a year to a year and a half before he wishes to proceed. So there is a bit of a timeline there before we would see the actual completion of units and then students coming from that, if the developer follows his time schedule that he's indicated to the city at this time.
I guess my thought would be that we should, in the planning process, being, we should be anticipating that obviously something is going to happen in that area and that that will essentially swamp that school.
Madam Chairperson, I guess until we see the approved plan, there's a lot of variation that could occur, and it could give you quite a wide array of answers to that specific question, I think, to be fair, in terms of the potential. We could get a significant number if he goes to a multifamily, for example, then that would create some very significant accommodation issues for Brick Street in the longer term, without question. If he proceeds with the single family with some duplexes, then based on the preschool population within the area and some maturing in some other parts of the area, there is a balancing of that total equation that could occur. So there is a range that certainly could occur from that one parcel alone within that community.
I guess my concern would be that we have a very limited site to begin with, a very limited site and a very limited structure as well, to be carrying the student load that it's carrying. And my thought would be that at some point, there has to be, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions, thank you very much, Sharon. And from the Wortley Road Home and School, Sue Hall.
I'm here tonight with my colleagues Mary Latham and Dave Jaxx, and we are here tonight representing the Wortley Road Facilities and Resources Steering Committee, associated with the Wortley Road Home and School Association. Our group made a presentation to you in October to inform you of the concerns that we had with elements of the annual planning document presented by the administration. The thrust of our presentation was to focus the board's attention to the problems that schools housed in aging structures experience and the inequities borne by the students who intend them. Considering the presentations made and the information presented that evening, you passed the following resolution, that the administration be directed to prepare for 1995 December, a report on how an overall policy might be developed related to overall school building equity, based on factors such as program needs, current building standards, gymnasium space, heating, plumbing, electrical maintenance, resource space, lunchroom facilities, computer labs, and establish a list of priority needs and funds that might be available from the board, corporate sponsors, and local communities. We would like to state for the record that we readily support this decision, or this recommendation, sorry. Based on the board's criteria as outlined in paragraph four point one point one of the 1995-1996 annual planning document, clearly, a large number of the identified needs at Wortley Road's public school, as listed in our brochure, would be considered in the essential or mandatory category. We were disappointed to learn from the accommodation planning report that the administration had not seen it possible to allocate funds in their capital budget to provide Wortley Road School with the renewal that is required for the children. We had expected that it would be recognized by this board that Wortley Road Public School required immediate upgrades in facilities to bring it more in line with the other schools in the city. We do understand that all schools can never be equal in facilities and resources, regardless of the process. However, we need to know that equability of quality education is being addressed in a cohesive and correlated manner. Wortley Road Public School would qualify under the criteria requirements as outlined in section one point three, page seven of the 1995-96 Accommodation Report, process for determining sites for facility renewal. Our disappointment stems not so much from the fact that the needs of Wortley Road Public School have been overlooked, but more importantly, it's not clear from this report where Wortley Road Public School or all other schools in the system fit into a renewals process. This report seems to suggest that our school will not be included in a budget for any major renewal until at least after the year 2002. Clearly, the estate of existing facilities and resources will have deteriorated even further, and the costs to do the required upgrades will have increased dramatically by the year 2002. The reason the school has been able to keep up as well as it has is due to the dedicated efforts of the staff and the community. Despite these best interests efforts, the facilities and resources at Wortley Road Public School continue to fall further and further behind the other schools. How can this be an equitable learning environment for our children? We find it extremely difficult to understand that there are other, most needy, bar none schools within the board without the knowledge of the criteria which schools are chosen for major renovation. Section one point three point one of the annual planning document suggests that the board has a process as it pertains to facility upgrades and maintenance. It says that the prioritization reflects the professional judgment of board departments. The parents in the community want to know where Wortley Road Public School fits into this process. As parents concerned about the learning environment of our children, we want to see this information presented within a complete plan for all schools, to be presented in a format that can be clearly understood by the public. As taxpayers, we have the right to expect that a plan exists to ensure that all schools in our education system are being maintained in a cyclical manner with clearly defined timeframes. Further, taxpayers should have access to information as to how and to when a particular school is scheduled for upgrades and maintenance, et cetera. In closing, we are encouraged by the resolution referred to previously that was passed by the board in the October meeting. We urge the board to continue to press the administration to develop such a policy as quickly as possible. This type of policy would enhance the system by providing parents, taxpayers, and administration with a clear framework from which funds are allocated to various projects. We believe that such a policy would foster openness and improve accountability between the board, the administration, and the public. This would also ensure that no school would ever fall significantly behind any other in its ability to provide equitable education opportunities for its students. We came here specifically as champions for our school, and we hope that we have brought to your attention the imperative needs of the one hundred and two-year-old Wortley Road Public School. We will not apologize for being advocates for our children for the essential upgrades necessary to provide the quality of education that we, as taxpayers, expect.
Are there any more presentation questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. You do have a copy of the report. We don't have your name on it.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. It's point of information for the trustees. As late as this morning, we reviewed an executive council and will be taken to admin council as part of the budget development, a plan that we would be bringing forward to you related to work to be done in schools. We will be clearly, again, differentiating between capital from current as it relates to board capital from current, issues that would be addressed in terms of ministry and local funding. So in other words, we will be bringing forward a plan that dovetails with what is defined in the planning document that was referred to in the fall. And as part of that budget presentation on February twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, I believe it is, we would be bringing to you a plan as to how this would proceed. It basically reinforces elements of the model that exist with some further elements related to the three-year fiscal planning exercise. So we have clearly, I think, not only heard the presentation tonight, but heard the comments previous, and would reiterate, from my perspective, I don't think any parents have to be at all apologetic for being advocates on behalf of their children.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item fourteen from the Tweedsmere Public School Steering Committee, Steve Vincent.
My name is Steve Vincent. Tonight, I am re-presenting Tweedsmere Public School as their school association president. I'm also parent on the local kids count committee. As one of the long list of people, I'm here to comment on the 1995-96 Accommodation Planning Report. The overview section of the document identifying strategic planning states is one of its priorities, equity. On October thirtieth, 1995, Mr. Skidmore stated equity, while a great concept cannot be accomplished. His direction was towards the development of minimum standards. Community involvement is also a stated priority. The majority of people in this room represent the community, volunteering endless hours to accomplish goals. I am fortunate enough to be involved in a board-sponsored project called Kids Count. The official term, I believe, is compensatory education. My impression through the involvement that I have is that this program relies on volunteers in the community to try to bring equity to the less fortunate schools without the board having to provide finances. I was present at the meeting referred to on page twelve, where the administration was directed to prepare a report on overall school building equity. I was satisfied that there would be consideration to alternative funding from corporate and community groups, considering Mr. Skidmore's comments that night and from other conversations I've had with him. Something that, something that as active community members, we try to provide for equity I am not satisfied with the response, starting on page thirteen, in which my opinion, which in my opinion is a political statement designed to avoid any position or any further work on the subject. It refers to future development, not existing structures, and funding from uncontrollable organizations such as corporate sponsors and communities. It states that prioritizing requests would be too complex. At this point, I question, does the administration want to consider equity or community involvement in its planning process, or does it wish to limit those stated priorities to its advantage? I believe long-term and operational planning are the answers to these strategic objectives if done properly. Tweedsmere School is directly mentioned twice in this document, once on page forty, to provide a new science and technology center in 1997, the last year of the system-wide implementation, at a rumored upgrade cost of about seventy thousand dollars. The second time on page thirty, in reference to accommodating a new neighborhood, Somerside, which will produce two thousand students. Tweedsmere will get its fair share of these students. Page fifty-four has a comment from the administration regarding dissatisfaction, there's my tongue twister for there, dissatisfying with long-term accommodation for holding zones. At Tweedsmere, Pondmill students' short-term stay lasted for over twenty years. The new Somerside School has had at least one delay, now scheduled for 2001. Housing sales in the area are not very strong, so as a member of the community, I predict the stay will be also for about twenty years. Why do communities object to be holding zones? Tweedsmere objects because no community involvement is requested. Health and safety of students is ignored to accomplish objectives. Proper planning, if done, is not visible. Tweedsmere has concerns, washrooms, traffic, gym facilities, lunch facilities, electrical and heating, are concerns that if not addressed now, will affect the children's educational environment. Since we are a compensatory education identified school now, what will happen in the future? With proper planning, we can accommodate enough students that the Somerside School can be delayed longer than 2001. But we need to throw ideas and concepts into the mix so we can all win. Before I end, I've been requested by these students to invite you to view a basketball game at our school. I've also been requested to ask you for your attendance at school musical production in early April. This event is possible because of our kids count partner, St. Bernadette's, which is allowing us the use of their facility. As a stakeholder, I would like to leave the following questions. Why is conventional funding the only method identified? Where is the community and corporate input from the strategic planning? If equity is identified as a priority, why are special interests such as Pearson, Apple, French Immersion, year-round schooling, Lady Beck, and new school structures taking priority? With all the great planning tools, why did we close Weeble and Sir Adam Beck High Schools and now plan to build another high school? Why are private bus operators operating in the city limits when another public entity, the LTC, does not provide the service? Why, listen to me, I'm only a parent who is concerned about my children and my community. I personally have the current opinion that I must move to another part of the city in order for my children to have the most equitable part of their education. Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. Director?
Madam Chairperson, I understand that there are no questions of clarification, but given the fact that there were some comments related to the document and from the perspective of the administration, I would simply share two or three observations. First of all, I do believe that equity is a value of this school system, and the night that I made the references that I made related to equity, it was not in any way to diminish the concept of equity, it was to bring some concept and balance, I guess, from an administrative perspective as to what minimum standards might be, and that still remains the goal of the organization. Secondly, I would want to assure the speaker and want to assure the trustees that there is nothing on page thirteen that is intended to be diminishing of the concept of equity or be seen as a political statement. As a person who brought the whole concept of compensatory education to this school system and encouraged the directions related to the Kids Count program and presently is the chair of the steering committee for the Kids Count program, I would want to assure the speaker and anyone else that administratively, we remain as committed to the concept of equity, and that includes as being as close to developing some minimum standards as what we can. And I would also point out, Madam Chairperson, as I had just a second ago, that we have attempted to differentiate between the forms of capital spending, and that will be part of the budget process that we bring forward. And I would be more than happy to meet with Mr. Vincent to discuss any concerns that he has related to any interpretations around those issues in the future. But... to any interpretations around those issues in the future. But very clearly would want to reemphasize the fact that, from a planning point of view, that we do consider public input of this nature administratively to be a fundamental part of how we do business.
Thank you very much. And as a commercial announcement, I just want to remind the people that are here, February the 27th and February the 28th, Tuesday and Wednesday evening, are going to be very important opportunities for the, our community partners to be here and to listen to the presentations that will be made to help us in our deliberations over the budget. So I would encourage you to keep those exciting evenings in mind. We're on to item 15, Jacob Weish. I hope that's not too far off the spelling. I guess I have a personal thing that would like it to sound a bit like mine. Just to confirm, Mr. Weish, you are representing yourself?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Weish. Madam Chair, trustees, members of the board. This report is to the planning report members. As a London taxpayer and also as a person in the business of providing quotations on proposed board renovations and new construction, I am always looking for ways to provide the lowest price possible while still meeting engineered specifications as detailed in tender documents. Is with this in mind that I wish to share my views. One inherent flaw in the tendering process is the single sourcing of the fire alarm and paging system. While I recognize the need for the fire alarm to be from one consistent source, thereby enhancing safety, in Ontario and the London market, this particular system can only be purchased from one source. The balance of specified materials can be purchased from multiple sources, ensuring competition will provide the lowest possible price. Unfortunately, the tender documents force a contractor to purchase the fire alarm from a single source. This seemingly negates the ability to provide free-market competition because the source for the fire alarm can inflate their price knowing it has to be purchased from them. To make matters worse, if a single-source item is packaged with multiple-source items, it is possible for the whole package to have an inflated price. To alleviate this problem, the tender documents should show the fire alarm as a separate price or as a cash allowance. This will allow free-market competition, yet give the board consistency in its safety systems. I have brought this issue to the board's attention in the past. They have agreed and indicated that it will be changed for the next time, while next time never seems to come. I might add that Mr. Daryl Skidmore, Mr. Bob Campbell, and Mr. Randy Wilson all would not respond to my inquiries in this matter. Another area where the board will save funds is of a technical nature. Many times, particularly in schools, fluorescent fixtures are placed in rows. These fixtures incorporate a ballast to operate the lamps. Today's technology allows for one ballast to operate many lamps. The fixtures themselves are usually each sold with a ballast. For example, place three fixtures in a row. Two are purchased without a ballast and one with a ballast. The center fixture can now operate all three. This system is called the master and slave system. Many commercial operators, such as Zellers, utilize this system to realize tremendous cost savings when purchasing the like fixtures. Recently, tenders on Chippewa Public School closed. On one fixture type alone on this project, I presented a savings of over $23,000 to the board using the master and slave system. They rejected the idea. The board felt that if the fixtures needed maintenance, they did not want the personnel to go searching for the ballast. I can assure you that a simple drawing detailing the presence of the ballast is quite inexpensive to obtain. I'm sure that any cost savings would go a long way to keeping the maintenance personnel employed. A further benefit of the master and slave system is reduced maintenance costs. Obviously, with less components, there will certainly be less to go wrong and less to replace, thereby increasing the cost savings. On a short note, perhaps the board should specify fixtures that are functional as opposed to aesthetically appealing. On Chippewa Public School, nice functional fixtures costing $40 each could have been used. Instead, ones costing $100 that look really nice but function the same were specified. I hope in this time of economic restraint, that above topics will provide some food for thought. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Trustee Alder.
One question, clarification on the second paragraph of your front page. Last sentence, you make the statement that if the single-source item is packaged with the multiple-source items, it is possible for the whole package to have an inflated price. Could you help me understand that?
Yeah, to visualize a little easier is if you need a specific tool to repair something, and let's just say, for example, Canadian Tire sold that tool, but you only buy it with 50 other tools. They would not take that tool up and sell it to you separately. They would insist that you buy the whole toolbox and pay $200 as opposed to $10 for that simple screwdriver.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Trustee McDonald.
Madam Chair, I don't know whether this is a question that Mr. Weish should be answering or the administration, but I seem to recollect that ballasts are difficult to dispose of. Is that correct, or is that a figment of my imagination?
You are correct historically, but that has to do with PCBs, but that technology has been replaced for many years. Of course, of course, old existing schools do have PCB ballasts, I'm sure, in those fixtures. How they are disposed of, I'm not sure myself.
So what you're saying is that in new ones, it's not a problem?
PCBs have never been sold in current ballasts for actually quite a number of years, obviously because they're inherent environmental concerns.
Thank you.
Trustee Brock.
Madam Chair, I think there should be some clarification from the administration on some of the comments, if that's appropriate. But first, I believe your reference, and I'm going to take the generic reference you've made, in fact, in tendering projects, if it is not, if there is not more than one, if it is spec such that you cannot have more than one bidder, you in fact do not have the tendering processes flawed.
If I understand you correctly, what you're trying to tell me here is that you only have one person who can provide a price for that specific item. That is a fact in this particular case.
So the inference here with the fire alarm and paging system is that it was specked in the tender in such a way that there was only one source?
That is correct. That is the fact in this particular system.
Okay, so that's the inference you're making?
Right.
And the second part of it, Madam Chair, wherever it's appropriate, we have in fact asked for and will be receiving back a review of the tender and proposal call later this year, which I would suspect would be one of the issues to address in that process that's been raised here. Administratively, is there a response with reference to the single sourcing?
Mr. Skidmore.
Mr. Wilson, then I'll respond.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. There has been tremendous effort over the last eight years to change our specifications to multiple sourcing, and there's been changes going on all the time. There's only very few items which are prescriptively specified. That's the term in specifications that is used. And they deal with systems or assemblies which are critical to maintain a consistency in. Fire and life safety issues are one of the areas that we've gone with a particular system, and it's been our view up until lately that we could not get a compatible system working with ours. There's been a lot of engineering done on this. It is not uncommon with boards to prescribe a fire alarm system to stay with that fire alarm system because it does have implications at our control center. It has implications in terms of the electronics that we use. I can tell you that there are other prescriptive specifications such as keys for locks and door systems. There is multiple suppliers out there. If we were to go to a non-prescribed locking system, we'd be looking at different locking mechanisms which would in fact increase our operating costs in terms of replacement. This goes on through a number of products. We do find that the opportunities to be non-prescriptive are increasing, especially with the electronics in today. But this has been an ongoing area of study with the engineers in my area, and their professional recommendation is to multiple specify, except when it's critical that we can't. And that's pretty widely accepted practice around the province.
Thank you very much. Mr. Skidmore.
If I may respond, I respect what you say, sir, and I indicate that when I say that providing the fire alarm from one consistent source thereby enhancing safety. And I understand the reasons why. What I'm showing to the board, to the trustees, trying to draw attention to here is that asking the tender documents to show a separate price or for the board to provide a cash allowance for the contractor to purchase the system will ensure that the board not only gets a fair price for that fire alarm system, but also that the balance of the project does not have an inflated price. By all means, have one specific system for the fire alarm to ensure that safety, but break out of the package, you ensure that you get a fair price for that fire alarm, and you ensure you get a fair price and the balance of the material for that project. Simple. And everybody should be satisfied with that solution.
Mr. Wilson.
Through you, Madam Chairperson. On any single construction project, we get requests from literally hundreds of suppliers who are requesting special attention in terms of specifying prices to be broken out. It is in our judgment that the way that we do the tendering process is fairest to all. We do run these tenders through what the Canadian Construction Documents Committee. We also run them in compliance with all of the rules of the province and the bid depository. If we were to start to split out all the separate prices of all the products, the evaluations on the tender packages would be very cumbersome and in fact probably impossible to make a judgment. They're the fairest that we know right now.
Mr. Skidmore.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I appreciate Randy's response. I appreciate the concern that's been brought forward tonight. I would reiterate, Chairperson's comments related to the tendering process coming forward for review, I think that comes to the School Operations and Business Committee, if I'm not mistaken, or Committee of the whole. Would be more than happy to make sure that the speaker has that information as to what night that happens and would undertake to make sure that that information is provided. I would also, Madam Chairperson, comment that I do not recall ever having been contacted about the issue. If I have been, in all likelihood, the matter would have been referred, as would be the case with Mr. Campbell, to the appropriate people. And I would simply offer an apology if there's any sense that the matter was not dealt with, but I can say with all candor that I have never received anything in writing related to this matter that I am aware of, but also would not have the expertise to respond and would refer it appropriately. So I would apologize if there's been any sense of lack of responsiveness. But quite frankly, this is the first that I'm ever hearing of this incident.
Really, no apology is warranted. It's just the, you do have good office staff in your front office. It was a mad this line when I wrote this report. I was quite frustrated with my attempt to reach somebody in the Board of Education after several hours of phone calls. It was only by luck that I ran across the ad in the newspaper, and I said, there's my opportunity to talk to somebody in the board. I know I did, in fact, go into somebody's cyberspace voicemail with no response back for any individuals involved. It was directed, finding that I should address myself to Mr. Trustee Brock. He was chair at the LTC at the time. I didn't want to bother him while I was providing services over there. Time is money, and I'm sure like the rest of us, we're all broke.
If you have future concerns of this nature, as with hundreds and hundreds of other people, please forward your concern to me. I'll be more than happy to make sure that somebody in the appropriate level of expertise responds to you. And as I said, this is the first time that I've been aware of it, so I'm pleased to hear your comment related to that, but would reiterate my willingness, Madam Chairperson, to make sure that we are responsive in future, but would simply also ask that that kind of matter be, albeit briefly, but at least committed to writing, that we can then respond appropriately.
Great. Thank you.
Trustee Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wonder if perhaps Mr. Wilson could comment on the other part of the presenter's suggestions here, and that is the $23,000 cost savings with the ballasts. Is the rationale that he states here actually, you know, valid? And if so, could they expand upon that?
Mr. Wilson.
Through you, Madam Chairperson. I can't speak to the issue of the $23,000 savings on the Chippewa tender. I can tell you that probably for about two days after any tender period, in a fair and open and impartial tender period after that process is closed, I probably receive in the order of 15 to 20 telephone calls from suppliers, subcontractors, and contractors who are offering savings. The bottom line is, we can't entertain them because we did go to the open market in a fair and open tender. We can't verify the claims. We have no way of doing that. I think we would be legally in breach of a contract with our first and lowest bidder in trusting that they've searched out the lowest prices. The tendering process is a process whereby the lowest man gets the job, and I can assure you that many of the contractors are searching out the very best prices. They have ample opportunity during the three, four-week tender period to come to the board and ask for considerations of products where they think they can save us money. We do entertain those requests through the tender period. On some occasions, we grant them. We issue tender addenda to allow for that to be fairly bid across all of the subcontractors. There are some that we are requesting, there are some that, there are some requests made of us that we can't approve because they don't meet the intent and the detail of the specification. I can't verify the individual claim. All I know is that the tender system does work. It works very well, and it provides very good and ample opportunity for contractors to suggest alternates and ways of saving money.
Anything further, Trustee Vaughn? Seeing no further questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Weish.
It's okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And he has left a copy. We'll be seeing that everyone gets a copy of that. Presenter number 16, Susan Smith.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to make a very brief presentation. My comments are to be directed to accommodation, and I won't probably name a specific school in my comments. I will encourage you to spend money. And I probably will be back here on the 27th and 28th encouraging you to spend money. I'll preface my remarks with saying that I feel junior kindergarten is a tremendous priority, a very significant priority, and I would like to see this board carry through with that and to inform many of your accommodation and all of your accommodation decisions based on that. I won't underscore the comments made by Steve Vincent, but the areas surrounding the issue of accommodation for the schools that don't yet have names and are in a holding configuration, I believe, are quite important. I represented the Ontario Environment Network two years ago on provincial committees to look at alternative development standards, and an area that was very carefully considered were alternative development standards for site planning and land use planning for institutional uses as well as private residential uses because, of course, school accommodation very clearly overlaps with that. And you have two areas designated, both Summerside and Kalali, as planning districts where that will become quite significant. So I'll specifically suggest that the three-year timeframe that you're looking at for completion of those projects, in light of the comments about how quickly other projects for already established schools can be completed once that has been undertaken, I feel that one of the things that should be looked at very, very closely is not, I have a bit of a historical perspective... have a bit of a historical perspective, since the last annexation, actually, the early 60s, that you do want to plan properly and accommodate and not miss out on that opportunity to get it exactly right the first time. The Land Use Planning and Protection Act is being proclaimed in March, and I would suggest to the elected people to consider asking your staff to carefully examine the areas of policy statements. The deadline for input on the part of a public body like this school board is February 23rd. And there are significant areas, I'll just highlight one very specific one, that could be of significance in the Summerside planning area. And that is that the Alternative Development Standards Group had representation on it from the Ontario Home Builders Association, a lot of municipal electrical associations, a lot of provincial bodies that are involved with infrastructure in the broadest sense of the word. And one of the things they looked at was the opportunity of looking at a piece of land and making sure that the land that was dedicated for the purposes of public institutions like schools were the areas of land where drainage was probably not as possible as any other developable part of the land. And it was quite interesting to hear people in a room, almost none of whom were parents, talk about the opportunities for how a wet spot that can't be drained could still be a wonderful learning opportunity on a school property. So with respect to that, where you're looking at particularly junior panel students, I would suggest that you consider all of those interests very carefully because they will be knocking at your door. Corollary to that, I would suggest that you use your considerable public roles to encourage the current municipal council to enact a municipal bylaw that will enable municipal ratepayer tax credit or direct municipality rebate to modest funding of registered candidates who can be audited for the purposes of the people who will be running for the positions you now fill during the next municipal election. I think that's a great opportunity to have equity that obviously this board is very much dedicated to, and to have it institutionalized in a sense that perhaps hasn't occurred yet and can continue to
One minute.
Improve the fine caliber of this current trustee board. I'll just make note that the person who's credited with a working model for school accommodation guidelines that has been adopted by boards across the province is the current Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs, so you ought to have a very strong ally in your corner. I'm quoting directly from the caucus biography sent out in 1991 for the progressive conservative party who currently form the government. In closing, I will also ask you on a personal basis too, please, consider the only part of Bill 26 I would encourage you to comply with in the extreme is the disclosure of salary of staff who receive remuneration at $100,000 or greater from this public institution. At the same time, I'll encourage you in some extracurricular reading to look at the most recent book by John Ralston Stahl called The Unconscious Civilization. I consider it to be valuable to inform the public role that you fill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Susan. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. I can assume that you probably don't have anything in writing that you would want to submit. I appreciate the freehand approach. Speaker number 17, David Hill.
Madam Chairman, trustees, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here basically on my own reconnaissance tonight. And there was a piece put in the paper today, and we'll probably reflect that later. The letter dated January 24th, 1996, which I believe the trustees all have, is my presentation to this board in regards to HB Beale Secondary School. HB Beale, as I understand, was on your last year's budget, but I relent that because the Beale project is starting to be ongoing and that it is mentioned in this year's accommodation planning report, I would like to bring to the attention that the taxpayers basically are not getting what they're paying for. The committee is to awaken, the committee's awareness that the taxpayers of London and Ontario are becoming more vigilant about the spending practices and wastefulness of governments. You as elected officials are and will be accountable for your actions in providing the taxpayers' funds for elaborate production such as the HB Beale Secondary School reconstruction project. With the downsizing of industry and the government's cutting programs in employment, it is unwise for this committee to continue spending in such a manner. Ladies and gentlemen, the party is over, and it's time to reevaluate this project. Taxpayers do not object to the education policies or the required tools to provide the necessities to perform these duties. They do object to funds not being allocated properly to best interests of the ratepayers of Ontario and of London. Historically, HB Beale was the first technical school in the city of London and still carries the LTS sign above its entrance, which is the London Technical School. Architecturally, the structure itself is not historic and has not been plucked as such. Representatives from LACAC, which is now LATCH, were requested to look at the structure for architectural attributes. The only items of interest, the facade, which was built roughly at the same time as central secondary school, and also the coved corridor ceilings were the only interest that was pointed out to the board, remember which would be Randy Wilson, I believe. The location of the structure when built was to provide a facility in the central portion of the city for the access of students. The school today does not meet Ontario Building Codes. Parking is to the minimum. The school population has outreached the premises, and the changes to the original platform of technical studies has changed dramatically. In the reconstruction of this existing site, this committee have bowed to political pressure and chose to reconstruct instead of building a new school. The acquisition of property to allow this development involves misjudgment by the elected officials of this committee. It is my understanding that this purchase of no more than two acres of land has cost taxpayers $6,578,000, which is located on your debenture loan for your 1996. In my letter of January 24th, 1996, I pointed out that 15 acres of land, the requirement for a high school, could and still can be purchased at the Wolseley Barracks site for $250,000 per acre at a cost of $3,750,000. The total land available at this existing site, which is HB Beale, is only 8.5 acres, which represents a total investment of $9,503,000. This lands to a shortfall to the taxpayers of $5,753,000, and results in less property for any future growth in the next decade. The construction of an underground parking facility in covered walkway is not what, nor the taxpayers consider education facilities. These are elaborate items that only private development can afford. Vision to the next decade, I will ask the committee to open its mind and look at what the education system will have to provide and what is required.
One minute.
The reason to provide a top caliber education system, facilities and equipment are in the hopes that our children and young adults are the future of this small planet in which we reside. The world's requirements and technology are changing in astronomical proportions, and the people with the talent and education accomplish these tasks are vital. In the coming millennium, changes in just the next 100 years will be as though the last 100 was at a standstill. The requirements for higher education for our future generations will be necessary for they will be competing against the world for jobs and economic position. The equipment and the facility requirements will need change beyond imagination to meet these growing changes. It is imperative that you look at this project and ask, will this facility provide for these changes as now defined? The city of London in its Vision 96 program has shown that a large industrial base will be located out at the airport area in the northeast area of London. The accessibility of a new school close to Fanchow College, the University of Western Ontario, and along with Clark Road Secondary School will provide the opportunity, the collaboration of technology and business to grow together. It is time to change the thinking of the past and relate to the future.
Can you round it up, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Take this time now and hold a project for 30 days and reevaluate this entire strategy before this committee, elected officials, make another large error in judgment for our future generations. So thank you.
Any questions?
Take your shot, Alex.
Seeing none, thank you very much. If you could, Mr. Sutherland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would I be correct in saying through you, Madam Chair, that Mr. Hill and I would have to agree to disagree on the value of the property at HB Beale?
And for an answer for that one?
Mr. Hill, would I be correct in saying that we would have to agree to disagree on the price of the property at HB Beale?
The price of the property at HB Beale is basically, you've spent $6.5 million on acquisition of property. And basically, as you say in the paper today, is 19 residences. As I understood, it's equal to two acres of land that you have acquired for $6.5 million. The two acres of land on non-developed property in today's market, or the land you've got there now, which is like a higher end market property, is worth $450,000 an acre. So you're looking only at $900,000 in non-developed property. If you tore everything down, what you're left with is $900,000. So therefore, you're at a deficit position already before you even start.
So I guess the answer to my question is yes, we'll have to agree to disagree.
Presumably, we'll have to, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Trustee Brock.
Sir, you're aware that this project is not something that just came out of the woodwork yesterday.
I understand, sir. No, I understand, Mr. Brock.
You're aware that since in the 80s, this board has had documentation that has identified the needs of alterations in that to Beale. You're aware of that information?
I'm aware that Beale is basically an outdated school.
Okay. You're aware that this board made a decision which was to stay in the core of the city, which is not a location you made reference to, but a fundamental decision that the core of the city was essential, and the presence of Beale there as a school was essential to continue the integrity of the core area. You're aware of the board making that decision?
I'm aware of the board making the decision politically because the original school was built centrally at the time, when it was built back in, I believe, 1920, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
That the need for a centrally located school at that time was required. We are now in 1990 and entering a new millennium of the 2000 where really a centrally located school is not to the best interest to the students of the upcoming generations.
Okay, so you're aware that the board made that decision, though?
To leave
To stay in the core. To stay in the core.
I understand that.
And you're aware that there was three public meetings where we had all kinds of public input on the issue? You're aware of that?
No, sir, I'm not.
Well, that's in fact what the board did, and I don't wish to debate. I just wish, I think it's important to get some facts on the floor. The other is that you're aware that the capacity of this school is about twice the size of other secondary schools recently built, that not having a handle on the land were somewhere around $20 million.
Seventeen point five was
Seventeen to twenty million, okay.
STA was seventeen point five, yes.
So if you look at the difference between the two, you're looking at somewhere between $35 and $40 million for a school that's twice the size. That would be a reasonable comparison based on the number you just gave?
If you use STA, which was 17.5 million dollars, and yes, the population of Beale, I believe, is 2,200, you would need two STAs. So at 17.5, you're looking at a $35 million investment. But you are looking at a $35 million investment in a brand-new school.
I think it was important, Madam Chair, just to set the background as how we got to where we are, and that in fact it has been arrived at in a public process, and that in fact the decision was made by this board to be, stay in the core area, and I think we now both share that information. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much. Will you be able to leave us a copy of your presentation?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would note that there are no further speakers on our list. And so before I take a motion to recess and reconvene next week in the board, I would just like to remind the trustees what happens from here. And for those of you that have stayed with us, and we appreciate that, thank you very much. Next week, after we go into the board, we will also, at an appropriate time, be moving into the Committee of the Whole, where we will be debating and discussing the recommendations. We will have the support of the information that was presented by Mr. Campbell last week and again this evening, so that will help us in our deliberations. So I will encourage you to reflect on the input today, and we'll look forward to meeting again next week. Motion to recess and reconvene. Trustee Freeman, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.